Welcome to Girl Talk. My name is Regina Ayers and I'm your host today on Girl Talk. This program is a program that focuses on the challenges, successes that women have in their daily lives. We interview women here in the Rogue Valley that are making a difference in our communities. And today, our topic is women running for office against incumbents on the Ashland City Council in the November election. Now, this is part two of part one of a two-part episode. I hope you were able to join us on part one. My co-host Carol Voison is not co-hosting with me today because she is actually one of the candidates that is running for city council. There are 11 candidates running for four positions. That's truly amazing. Usually, there are only three. There were two appointed positions and they are up for election. Except for the municipal court judge and the county, I keep saying county, excuse me, city recorder, all of the candidates are running, have opponents, and they have incumbent opponents. So, there is really no open seat. There's position two, and that is Mike Morris, Theo White, and Tanya Graham, who is with us today. City Council position three is Jackie Bachman, Julie Atkins, who is with us today, and Alfred Will Slater. And City Council position four, which is Stephanie Steffinger and Carol Voison. And then, there is position six, where there are three gentlemen running against in that position. Now, I attended a forum this week where they had, nine of the 11 candidates were present. And it was just really encouraging to see so many people willing to step forward. I've run for office before. It's a challenge, and in a lot of ways, it's a thankless job. But we are so happy in our community to have so many engaged and excited people. And we're happy to have three of them here today. So, welcome to Julie Atkins, and Tanya Graham, and to Carol Voison. So, the format today is going to be not quite as rigid as it has been. It's not time. We're just going to have a conversation. You've received some questions, but we'll have some questions that are more spontaneous. So, why don't we get started? So, let's see. The first question I'm going to ask in this part two is, there's been discussion over the years about doing away with the structure that we have today where we have six positions, and people run for specific positions that then represent the entire community. There's been talk of having people represent certain sections of the city, and also about the fact that we just elect the top three vote-getters. So, we've got 11 candidates. Well, let's see, for the city council, we have, no, that's right, we have 11 candidates. Hard to believe. And everybody votes for anybody they want to vote for, and we pick the top three. So, Carol, since you've had more experience on the city council, why don't you lead off in the discussion on that structure?
I think it would be a healthy structure. Because what it does is, you're not running against a person. What you're doing is you're presenting yourself to the entire community. And I think that's really important, because that's who you represent. And when you're in a position that means nothing, you know, position four, three, two, it doesn't mean anything. It doesn't represent a group of people. But when you take the three top or four top vote-getters, it's more, I think it's fairer. It also ensures that we'll have people running against, we'll have enough candidates, and we won't have a position where there's an incumbent that just continues on and on and on. And I think it will add a great deal of diversity to our elected members, to the elected council, as well as Parks Commission. I think we should try it. They do it in Maine for the whole state, and it works. So, I would like to see us try that. It would take a charter amendment, which means-
That's a challenge.
It's a challenge. And it would take, that means that amendment has to go to the entire community in an election. So, you know, it would take some work, and we'll see what happens. I think there are several people who want to have the next council introduces on the ballot.
Julie, what do you think?
Yeah, I agree with Carol. I think the seats don't really make sense if it's at-large. That's what's odd about it. So, I've had many people ask me, "Well, why are you running for this seat?" And I have to answer every time, "Well, I'm not, I'm running for the city of Ashland. It's an at-large position. There isn't a precinct or a parish. I represent everybody, and this just happened to be the seat I decided to run for. It's not because I'm running against a particular person." So, in my case, yeah, I think the seat thing doesn't really make sense. We have four positions open. It'd be really nice if just the four top vote-getters won, and we could do it that way. Actually, one of my opponents, Al, suggested this, and has been talking about it frequently-
For years.
-because it happened when he was on council. And he felt it happened as a way of sort of perhaps pushing him out, because he was outspoken. This is what he says. I don't know the full history of it, but I totally agree. I don't think it's really very logical. Now, Carol's point about how difficult it might be to get it done is valid, you know, but yeah, I think it doesn't make sense that we're doing it.
Tanya?
Well, in larger cities, there are very good reasons for having geographic precincts, and wards, that sort of thing, where to make sure that the full city is being represented on the council.
But they represent a certain ward-
But they represent a specific geography.
Right.
If you're not going to represent a specific geography, then it doesn't make sense to have a position. That position is still at-large. I have the same thing. When I talk to people, they say, "Now, can I just vote for yours because of my neighborhood?" And I have to say, "No, you're going to get to vote on all four." And so, because they're not linked in any way to a geography, it doesn't make sense that they have to have opponents. You know, people have to line up on a specific position.
And it makes it so much cleaner, because you're not running against a person.
Right.
So, it takes the personality out of it, and it really gets into the issues, and you can dig, I think you can dig even deeper into them. So, I just think it's a win-win for citizens and candidates.
Well, you know, it's a little hard to manage, you know, there were, if there had been all 11 candidates, you'd have to have all the candidates present if you had for each forum, because you're not focusing just on one particular position. So, it's a little, logistically, it may be a little harder to do. But as a citizen who's not running for office right now, I think I would have a tendency to support that also. But changing the charter, somebody would really have to drive that effort in order to make it happen. Yeah. So, okay, let's talk about negative campaigning. It happens. I know when Carol and I ran in 2012 for city council, there was a PAC that was a conservative PAC that ran against Carol and I and another gentleman that were, we weren't running together, but they put us together, because we were the more progressive candidates. And they, advertising, brochures-
Mailers.
Mailers, everything. And just in our little town, it was just very discouraging. And I can't imagine at the national level how people deal with the negative campaigning. So, why don't we talk a little bit about whether you've had what you feel is negative campaigning against you? And if so, how have you handled that? Carol, you want to start?
Whoa. Yes, I have. And I've been through, I think, three campaign schools, and they all say the same thing. When there's negative campaigning, you answer within 24 hours. Somehow, you answer it. Whether it's on Facebook, whether it's a printed forum, or whether it's in a forum, you definitely have to answer back. And that's difficult in a small town. You know, what avenues do we have to face off with that? You know, you can buy an ad in the paper. That's all expensive. But their advice was, you've got to get your voice out there to counter it. If you don't, it takes hold, and it takes hold really fast. So, that's, I haven't done that. And I think that's one of my problems. I just have not, I do have negative campaigning going on now.
On what media? Where are you seeing that? In the paper?
People telling me about what other people are saying.
Saying, okay.
Yes. And I, what I've done is I've tapped a couple of friends who know the people who are doing it, and they have said they will talk to them about it, and find out what their source is, and at least engage them in some conversation. They think it was better for them to do it than for me to do it. So, that's one way to get to the personal kinds of attacks that I am hearing about. The other ones where things are misrepresenting things that you've said, like I'm engaged now with Facebook, I have the facts, and I'm going to get them out as soon as I have time to get back to Facebook. So, you just, and it will be within 24 hours. So, you just have to respond quickly.
Tanya?
So, I haven't experienced any negative campaigning.
Great.
I haven't spoken directly with Theo, but Mike and I had a conversation at the beginning of the election season, just a sit-down coffee of, you know, what can we expect from each other in the election? And I think we're both out just putting our campaigns out in the world, and talking to folks, and giving people a clear decision between two very different types of leadership. And so, that's really where this piece has come down. And I don't expect to have anything. I intend to keep my word, and I expect Mike will. He's a good guy. He's well-known and liked in the community. I'm not expecting to have to deal with any negative campaigning.
But sometimes, there are third parties. That's what-
We experience.
We experience with that PAC. The candidates that we were running against said, "I don't support this." But sometimes, you don't have control over third parties. Yeah.
And in that case, I think it's, you do have to respond quickly, and through whatever networks you have locally. It's a small town, and so, it's not, and we have, budgets don't allow for big media buys. But we do have networks. And I think that's really the strength of anyone who is running for office, is what have they done in the community? How do people know them already? And what have they seen? Because in that sort of a situation, if it were to arise, I think a candidate has to depend on other people's willingness to defend them as well.
Right.
Julie?
Yeah, I think I should probably get right to it, since we're saying you have to respond in 24 hours. I have had some people do some negative campaigning against me. I got to tell you, I'm not super surprised. As I say often, I've been a journalist for 30 years. I have an investigative bent. I've done some stories covering city beat that some folks in the status quo find rather troubling. Sorry. I did my job. I like telling the truth, and I did it. Everything was verified, but some folks still don't like that. So, I've had to contend with rumors in the community that I'm not a team player, and somehow, a flamethrower. I'm not. It's absurd. I, you know, I worked in community organizing all my life. In fact, when I was seven years old, I used to help on campaigns, going door-to-door with people. This is nothing new for me, nothing scary about it, and I absolutely collaborate, or I couldn't even be where I am today. You know, every project I've done has had lots of hands on it, and I'm grateful for everybody I've worked with. So, it's just, it's not true, but it's a way of sort of protecting the status quo. I even had someone say to me, "Well, I understand you're friends with Carol Voison."
Carol!
Oh, my gosh!
And I said, "You know, I am friends with Carol Voison. I like Carol. I find her to be a charming, fun, entertaining, smart person, and I make no apologies for that." Does it mean that Carol and I say all the same things? If we both served on council, would I always agree? No, I would not. You know, there are sometimes Carol and I have different positions on things. That's okay. You can be friends with people and disagree. Happens all the time, and you can collaborate. And whatever decision is made, I would do my best to make sure that decision was successful, whether I agreed with it or I didn't. Because it's important for the city to move forward together and create good policy. So, yeah, that's how I would address it, and I continue to, you know, and door-to-door, I talk to people. And I even recently met with a man who asked to meet with me and said, "I just want you to know, there's no way I would ever vote for you, but I'd like to have coffee with you." And we're friends now. We're meeting once a week, having coffee. And I enjoy hearing his perspective, and I enjoy hearing his history of the area and what he knows. And I've learned from him. So, we can learn from everybody we touch, and I think it's important that we are willing to address negativity. I don't, no one likes it, but you've got to talk about it, and that's okay.
Well, would you explain one word for me that you use in the forum? Hotspur?
Oh.
What does that mean?
It means full-spirited. It means sort of, my father used to say it to me, "Kid, you got hot spot." It just means, you know, "Go get 'em. Go get 'em, tiger." That's kind of a, I've come from a Jewish family, and it's a common term.
It is, yes. That was clever. I was there for that.
Yeah, I like that. That's a good word.
So, you all have three campaigns. So, what is your, who is on your campaign? I mean, you know, maybe it's only you. I don't know. So, what were the, not necessarily naming people, but what were the roles that you felt you needed help with?
So, yeah, I have a volunteer team. We meet once a week, and they take on a variety of different jobs. So, we have one person who's dealing a lot with social media and video, and how do we make sure that we get out electronically? Another one is dealing a lot with yard signs, and just sort of the logistics of the physical delivery and installation of yard signs. Other folks are maintaining lists, helping put together canvassing, that sort of thing. I've got people dealing with data on the canvassing side. And then, also, of course, everybody has a treasurer, and making sure we stay on the right side of campaign finance work. So, a lot of it is staying organized and having people take on tasks. So, we have, I have this main core of folks on my team, and then, there are individual people also who take on very specific tasks for the campaign, who don't come every week, but who are seeing a particular job all the way through the election. And that's, you know, many hands make light work. And that's really what's been so heartening about all of this, is the people who've just come forward and said, "How can I help with your campaign?" People that I didn't necessarily know all that well before this. So, it's been a great process.
Yeah. So, Carol, who's on your team?
Well, I have a kitchen cabinet. And whenever I have a decision that needs to be made, we either get together, or email, or call one another, and a decision will be made. I make the decision, of course, but I have to have input. And I will engage, I think it's five or six people now, asking them, "What do you think about this? Should I engage in this?" And I get their feedback, and they're well-known in the community, well-connected, so that helps me a lot. I have a designer who designs my, the piece that I hand out to people, the fact sheet, when I knock on doors, and also the lawn sign and other things, anything that's designed. I have a designer who does that. I also decided to not do the usual thing with the database, and go to where all the Dems are, or go to, you know, various places where the people voted. I decided, "I'm not going to do that." So, instead, and that, you know, I had to, I consulted with the kitchen cabinet. And instead, I went to, and I'm still going, to the main streets in our town, and for two reasons. One, because those people sometimes aren't engaged in conversations, so I wanted to be sure I did that. The second reason was, I wanted to get a lawn sign up in places that I haven't had them before. So, when you engage people, and you find that they're really willing to vote for you, that's the time you say, "Okay, can I have a lawn sign here?" So, I've got lawn signs in places I never had before, and it's because I did it very differently this time, in going around and knocking on doors. I'm also very committed to going to students and young people, know where they live. I want to talk with them about what their issues are, and I'm getting an earful. I also engage with people who say, "Oh, I'm not registered." And I'll say, "Well, wait a minute. You're not registered?" And I ask them, "Well, would you like to be registered?" And they usually say, "Yeah." And I said, "Wait, here's the form. Fill it out. You can go online, or fill this out and get it in. You have till October 16th, so please, you know, get registered, and then, please, vote." And, you know, I don't care if they vote for me or not, at that point. I just want them to get registered, especially young people, and then vote. And so, that's been really rewarding in the sense of what I've been doing. And then, again, people who will just call up and say, "What can I do? I want to help." And finding things for them to do, which is pretty easy to do.
So, Julie?
Well, I'm not a politician by trade. Never thought I'd be sitting here. So, this is really every step of it, super exciting for me. And sometimes, I feel like the whole city of Ashland's on my team, really. I go to stores, and people will walk up and recognize me and hand me a check. Like, this has happened to me. It's just so cool and so gratifying. I have a small, committed team of folks. I've got a person who does marketing, who's fantastic, who's also my neighbor and has been my buddy for bazillion years. And, you know, my super cute partner is my campaign manager, and my grandchildren are my boots-on-the-ground. I mean, this is very, you know, super bootstrapped, grassroots kind of a campaign. But, you know, we're doing pretty well. We work well together. These are people who've done this work before, which I didn't even know until I started running, that these guys all had experience in it. We hadn't talked about it. So, that's kind of cool. Yeah, so, that's the team, and I consult everybody. I consult people who live in Ashland about what's important to them. And I watched, as I say, I went to all the council meetings. I watched the testimony that people gave, and I've stayed up on it. And their priorities are my priorities, so that works out really well. So, yeah, it's a lean, mean, little machine. We keep in mind that it's supposed to be fun. We're supposed to enjoy it, and each other's company, and we are. In fact, I don't know, guys, I'm telling you, keep your eyes open for Kira Robinson down the road. I think she's going to run for something powerful. My little nine-year-old, seemed to be ten-year-old granddaughter is a ball of fire. She's going door-to-door, just, "Vote for my gam. Here's her card." It's really, she's got a hot spot.
She has a hot spot, right. You pass it along.
So, yeah, that's my team.
Yeah. Well, let's tell our audience again, you mentioned it, the last day to register to vote is October 16th. That is Tuesday.
Ballots drop on October 22nd?
Uh-huh, October 22nd.
October 22nd.
Okay. And I know I got my sample ballot in the mail already, so I've been looking through that. So, those are very important dates for everybody to remember. Now, we'll kind of close on this topic. This is supposedly, yet again, the year of the woman. And we do have thousands of women running for office across this country, and it is just inspiring. And right here in our little town, we have lots of women, three of them being here today, running for office. And so, I'd like to hear from each of our guests here today. What is it like running for office as a woman? The advantages or disadvantages that you feel you might have, or maybe you don't think there's a difference? And how important is it for us to get more women represented in positions of power where they can make decisions that affect other women and affect families, perhaps in a way that male candidates don't make decisions that impact women and families? So, I'd like to kind of focus on that as we close our part two. And let's start with Julie.
Oh, okay, great. Well, I think there are, there's important distinctions to make, and I think language really matters. I was thinking about this the other day. There's this myth of female fragility that we've got to get past. I think it hurts us as women. And what I mean by that is just even the way we discuss things. A female attorney, stop it. She's an attorney. A female candidate, stop it. She's a candidate. So, I want to try to start parsing that differently. When we talk about reproductive rights, which I know, I'm not driving in my own lane right now. I know we're not deciding that on a council level, but we're talking about gender here. When we talk about reproductive rights, can we just talk about human reproductive rights? Because women aren't the only ones who reproduce. It takes a team to make that happen. So, let's start talking about things in real terms. When we talk about sexual assault, I really just don't want anyone to tell me ever again that I need to walk in pairs or threes to go from one location to another after dark. I'm not going to do it. I'm a real person. If I have to run to 7-Eleven at 11 o'clock at night for breakfast cereal, I can't call up a team of people and go there with them. Let's be realistic. Let's start creating a world where women don't have to worry about that, where we're not separated out of the group in some way. Women represent more than half of this country, and we need to come together and work together and get a hold of these issues. As a city councilor, you know, top of mind for me, I think about this all the time, because I know so many young, single mothers. And I know their experience very well. I know how hard it is to get a job when you've got little kids at home and you can't afford daycare. That's in my head all the time. So, when I'm talking about affordable housing, I'm thinking of her and her children. And I don't know if a guy thinks like that. I think some men do, but I think some don't, because they don't have the lived experience I have. So, that's where it comes in handy. And I'll say this, I am running. There's a man who wants seat three, and there's a woman who wants seat three, and you know what? I will never in life run another woman down to get any sort of an advantage, never. If I lose because of that, so be it. There's a certain value in loyalty, and friendship, and fidelity, and working together, and I hold that as my high value. So, there you go.
Okay. Wow. Tanya?
Exactly.
It's hard to follow.
There we go. You know, one of the interesting things, I think, about gender is where bias comes into this conversation. And bias is that subconscious, that wiring that we get from being in a culture that has a particular perspective about a woman, or about a particular racial group, that sort of thing. It's not easy to see it. And so, one of the things that I think as a councilor we can do is to make sure that our city staff are being trained in implicit bias, for racial bias, for gender bias, for all sorts of bias. And we know that the police department has started down the path for that, but I think everyone in, who works for the city, who encounters people in the community, or hires folks, should be trained in this way. And then, that's one of the ways that we can really start to operationalize being that fair and equitable society and community that we want to be, and that is a high priority for a lot of folks in Ashland.
Running out of time.
Running out of time, okay.
So, I'm going to, Carol needs to speak to that.
Okay. The one thing that I think all women do, or every woman I've known, is that we're collaborative. We're team players. We know how to listen. And that, those are qualities that women carry. There's some men who can do that as well, but I think, I don't think I've met a woman who doesn't do at least those three things. And then, when someone, usually a man, who will say, "Well, what you're saying is aggressive, and, you know, wait a minute, it's assertive." And women can be assertive without demeaning anyone, and we are. And I think we need to celebrate those kinds of skills that we have.
Great. Well, thank you, ladies, for being with us today, and that's the end of part two. And I wish you all the very best of luck. Of course, I'm looking for gender equity on the city council.
Yeah.
I've been looking for that for a long time.
Well, they have it.
So, I want more women on the city council. I'd like to thank our volunteer crew, Keegan, who is on camera, Wanda, our director, David Nienau, Charles Douglas. Girl Talk can be seen on Rogue Valley TV, Channel 15, on Ashland Home Net, or Channel 182. So, thank you very much for watching us today, and we'll see you next time.